Good evening. The November tenth, two thousand and fifteen meeting of the North Kingstown School Committee is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Haley, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Ammanzato? Mr. Blasbok?
Here.
Clarkin?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. McGovern?
Here.
Mrs. Hill? Student representative?
Thank you.
Mrs. Haley, will you please recite the calendar?
Wednesday, November eleventh, it's Veterans Day and schools and offices are closed. Thursday, November twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, Thanksgiving recess, schools and offices are closed. Tuesday, December first, there will be a C-LAC meeting at six thirty at Davisville Academy. Tuesday, December eighth, there will be a school committee work session at seven PM in the high school.
Thank you, Mrs. Haley. Dr. Humbird, would you like to introduce the presentations for this evening?
It would be my pleasure to introduce. We have three presentations this evening, and the first one that we're highlighting is presented by Janice Strain. Janice is our K to A Coordinator for Art, and she has, is working on a huge community project that is happening on November eighteenth that she's going to tell us about, and she is introducing art into STEM, which is, of course, science, technology, engineering, and math. Janice?
Thank you. That was a great introduction. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight. I was gonna come out and start with the acronyms before I presented. STEM, which is science, tech, not technology, engineering, and math. And STEAM, which is science, technology, engineering, art, and design with math. So with given that, in addition to being a North Kingstown teacher, I also serve on the Rhode Island STEAM Coalition, which is a broad alliance of nearly two hundred and fifty individuals, businesses, education, and government. We are organized and coordinated by the Rhode Island STEM Center. We've been working to develop a STEAM-literate population in Rhode Island who will possess the skills to become productive citizens in the twenty-first century and will have the capacity to contribute and invigorate the Rhode Island economy. And this is just one reason why I wanted to bring STEAM into North Kingstown and really introduce this to the students and the families here to see what it's all about and try to get them to bring back the fun in learning and if they really enjoy what they're doing and their natural abilities and talents and they can connect that to courses here at the high school and college majors, and maybe they can end up, you know, working in a career that they enjoy for lifelong learning and promoting these STEAM careers that are coming about. The reason why I'm in front of you is I've been planning this NK first-ever STEAM event, which is gonna happen on November eighteenth. Very excited. We have, just to name a few, the Center for Dynamic Learning, Angelo's Restaurant, the Rhode Island Manufacturers Association, the Rhode Island Marines Trade Association is coming in, Electric Boat, they're just some of the volunteers who are gonna present hands-on workshops to our students. If you'd like to see the complete list, I did, I did give you the workshop listings that came in the mail. This is a free event, and it's open to students in grades six through twelve in both the Jamestown and North Kingstown communities, including those students who go to magnet schools and our home schools. Kids who sign up for these events will have the chance to build boats, Rube Goldberg contraptions, balloon-powered cars, a better bird's nest, create, design solutions for the community, conceptually open a restaurant, make and create in the culinary arts, learn about today's pen turning process, manufacturing, vector graphics, and software development today, medical illustrations, and a Zooma workshop, and they'll be able to submerge a submarine underwater with electric boat. Students will also receive an individualized STEAM workshop pathway where their workshop will be connected to the presenter, the name of the workshop, and North Kingstown specific courses that we teach here, and a college major and a career. That's also in there as well. So, kind of looks like this, except it has their name on the top. When they come in, they'll know what session that they're going to, what room, and then the pathway is right there for them. Really excited. I just, after being on this coalition for over a year, I just had this dream of doing this, and nothing can stop me now. I'm excited to bring this into North Kingstown, and I'm just hoping for a great night. We have about three, no, I'm sorry, a hundred and thirty-two students enrolled at this point, and it keeps growing. And my presenters are very excited to come here, and I'm just gonna bring it all together. I'm trying to get some great news coverage from ten, twelve, and six, and I've been putting it in the press, and it's also been on Peg TV and on all the student listservs. And I invite all of you to come. I believe I'm sending you an invitation, just to see what it's all about, and really, you know, come and see this kids' curiosity as they, you know, work on these hands-on activities and, you know, get their, get their curiosities going, and, you know, really let them walk out with, you know what, maybe this is something I really wanna do with my life. I promoted this at the, our career night last week. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. If not, you know, anyone out in the public, if you have a student in six or twelve in Jamestown and North Kingstown that would still like to sign up for these workshops, we do still have them open and will continue to keep them open until they all fill up. We'll even take in walk-ins that night in case there are, there are openings. And if anyone would like to volunteer or have any questions, you can email me at janice underscore strain at nkst.net, or you can call the high school and get in touch with me there. But thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Janice. We're looking forward to that event. And now we have two social studies teachers from the middle schools, respective middle schools, DMS and Whip Middle School. And these, these two teachers have had an interesting experience. They had, both of them conducted summer study tours, one to the Philippines and the other two, Japan and China. They had to pass some serious criteria in order to be accepted into the program where they learned about culture and history. So these educated trips provided experience and knowledge that they can take to the classroom, and I thought it'd be very important for you to hear what they were involved in. So which one of you is gonna go first?
Looks like I'm first. So, good evening. Hello, I'm Sandra Mikelski. I teach seventh grade social studies at Davisville Middle School. The seventh grade social studies curriculum is geography with an emphasis on Asia and Africa. And as a result of that, my desire is to travel to Asia. I've been there a number of times, and now my goal, and hopefully the near future, is to get myself to Africa. But this past summer, I went to the Philippines, and it was my life as a celebrity because of the way I was treated in the Philippines. It was fantastic. What can I do to... So, the program that I participated in is called Teachers for Global Classrooms. It's a State Department program, and it's managed by IREX. The United States State Department is a sponsor of over one hundred exchange programs. They promote programs with exchanges for K through twelve teachers, exchanges between college professors and for students. And in this case, this was a program that was geared to, geared to bringing teachers together in different countries. The process itself was pretty lengthy. I applied in March, I was chosen in May, I did a fall online graduate-level course on global citizenship. That following February, I participated in a symposium in Washington DC with the other eighty participants, and then I did my field study for three weeks in the Philippines. And I was one of eighty people that were chosen out of an applicant pool of four hundred. It's more fun in the Philippines. That's the catchphrase in the Philippines right now. So I was lucky enough to go for three weeks. The way this program is organized or designed is that it pairs teachers from the United States with a teacher in your host country. And that's designed so that we can share our practices, our teaching practices, and help us develop connections and networking that we can bring back to our classroom. So I spent three weeks in Manila, and I was paired with a gentleman by the name of Ruffo de León. I stayed primarily at Jose Rizal University, which is a private school that caters to kids in kindergarten all the way through graduate school. So you could go to kindergarten there and get your law degree, and that's not uncommon in the Philippines. They have approximately nine thousand students at this school. My host teacher, Sir Ruffo, planned many school visits. I visited altogether ten schools. We visited the city, Mandalayong, which is where, it's part of Metro Manila, and it's where Jose Rizal University is located, and we visited historical sites. The big, big talk in the Philippines right now is that up until this year, they have only had a program that's K through ten. They are the last remaining Asian country to put in place grades eleven and twelve. And this is an enormous task that they're taking on, and if you start to think about just the process behind that, that means that the universities will not have students for two years, because now they're going on to grades eleven and twelve. So schools are not prepared to house all these extra students. Many of the schools range in size from about four to five thousand per school. So this is a big undertaking that they're looking towards, putting into place starting June of two thousand and sixteen. So actually, they were very curious about eleventh and twelfth grade here at North Kingstown. I was greeted everywhere that I went like a celebrity, and I, I can't say enough about the treatment and hospitality I received. I was greeted with banners, which is that center picture, center middle picture with my name and my face at every other location. I was greeted with bands playing, with flowers, with kids singing, kids doing dances. I spent most of my time at the city of Mandalayong, and I was given the key to the city. I, I mean, it was just a very warm welcome that I received, partly because I come from a different country and partly because I'm an educator. So it really showed me how they respect teachers in the Philippines. And I cannot forget the food. Everywhere we went, we were offered food, and delicious food at that. So, future goals. Here, I've gone on this incredible travel experience, and the big question is, what am I going to do with it? And this was a huge leap for me. The program expected me to incorporate technology while I was in the Philippines and following my experience. So I maintained a blog, and following my experience, I had to create a website. So if you go to Footsteps Across the Planet, you can check out my website, which is a huge leap for me, and I'm very, very proud of that. Also, I worked to incorporate my experiences into the classroom through lessons on the places I visited and the artifacts that I brought back. And I'm striving to go beyond my textbook and the internet. We tend to now use the internet, if we're not careful, like a research tool, like an extension of our textbook, when in reality, it can be so much more. And that means that I can bring the outside world into my classroom, whether it be through Skype, whether it be through Google Hangtime, or through ePals, which we would know as Penpals. And lastly, I'm trying to encourage other teachers to, to take this healthy risk and reach out and travel. Our job is to help create global citizens, and we can't do that unless we bring the outside world into our classroom. So I am right there supporting teachers in sharing my experiences and encouraging them to apply. And lastly, I have to thank my administrators. Ruthie and Logan and Marissa Eisner have been very supportive of me. There have been times where I said, "I need a letter of recommendation." "When do you need it by?" "Within twenty-four hours." "No problem." I mean, they've been right there supporting me and encouraging me to take these healthy risks. I come back with these bright ideas, and I say, "I wanna do this in my classroom," and they say, "No problem." And, and that, as an educator, makes me feel confident and secure and want to do more. And lastly, I need to give a special shout-out to Michelle Humbird, because again, she's been very encouraging and very supportive in all my endeavors, because again, I, I find myself reaching and trying to do more and taking these risks, and as I've said, my administrators have been right there supporting me. And I have one last slide, and this is one of my highlights of my trip. We visited the U.S. Embassy, and smack dab in the middle is Ambassador Goldberg. We had a tour of the U.S. Embassy in Manila. He sat down with us and gave us almost forty-five minutes of a private session where we could ask him questions and get a sense of what his experience is in the Philippines. And along with that, a photo shoot with Mr. Goldberg. I just wanna say thank you very much for all of the support I've received, and I look forward to my future trips wherever they take me. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sandra. And now Suzanne will present to us her endeavors over the summer.
Hello. My name is Suzanne Close, and I teach at Wickford Middle School. I am also a seventh grade geography teacher, so I'm Sandy Mikelski's counterpart at Wickford Middle School. Last year, I had looked at traveling and taken classes that would afford me the privilege of traveling, and last year, at our professional development meeting in January, Sandy spoke about Japan, right? She spoke about Japan. And I had looked at several opportunities for me to travel, and I said, "Just do it." So I went home that weekend, and I filled out the application and applied and was accepted to go to China and Japan. It wasn't quite that easy. Part of what I had done for background knowledge is I had taken a class in two thousand, in two thousand and six and seven with National, the National Consortium for Teaching about Asia. It is a program that is funded by the Freeman Foundation, and Mr. Freeman originally worked for AIG. He made most of his money in East Asia, and he thought it was important to create a foundation upon his death that would fund teachers in the ability to, to learn about Asia, East Asia in particular, and to travel there as well. So he funded this, and this is where the money comes from for the National Consortium. The consortium is, is housed in five different universities. It is at Columbia, it is also at the five colleges in Amherst, it is at Washington State and Colorado, and I believe the last one is Indiana University. In order to be eligible to take any of the study tours, you have to spend thirty hours in classes, learning ahead of time. So you need to have put the time in advance. So a lot of what, you know, Sandy spoke about, that she had a year to prepare for this, I too had to prepare as well, but it could have been any time in advance. So I took mine in two thousand and six and two thousand and seven. My trip started off in Tokyo. We flew into Tokyo, and then we immediately went to Sendai. So we went to Sendai and to Nara and Kyoto. So in Sendai, we visited many places, including mausoleums, Shinto mausoleums, and we also went to, I'm sorry, went to the Sendai City Museum as well. The next day, we traveled to, and I have to try and pronounce this correctly, Minami, Minamisunrico, which is one of the places that was hit very heavily by the 2011 Tohoku earthquake and tsunami. It was, the town was totally devastated. I'm just gonna point, no, hold on. And so the building on the left-hand side was their emergency center, and it was where they were trying to decide if they should evacuate the whole town, and it was hit by the tsunami at that point. There were forty-eight people in the building, and thirty-eight of them passed. So ten of them were survived, and they survived by standing on the poles at the top of the building. The whole town was, was devastated by the tsunami. There were seventeen thousand people that originally lived in town, ten thousand died in the tsunami. So, the, the country of Japan wanted us to go and travel there. Part of Japan society also paid for us to visit this place and to meet with survivors to see how they're faring, to see what they've done to the, done to the town to refurbish it. They did have different systems in place so that when a wave would come in, a tsunami wave would come in, that they would be protected. However, they never expected the tsunami wave to be that high, and so this one was much higher than the ones in the past, and therefore, the whole town was devastated. We spent a day at a junior and senior high school, the Tohokagawen Junior and Senior High School, and that picture is actually of bicycles. It's a garage of bicycles, and it just, I look at outside of our window, and we have one bicycle rack that has four or five bicycles. They had no place for cars. This is what they had. And when you look at our high school, we've got all this parking for students, but we don't really have a lot of bike racks. And I just thought that showed a big cultural difference in the way that they get to school versus the way we get to school. So it was a very interesting day spending at the school. In Tokyo, in Tokyo, we visited the Edo Tokyo Museum, which is a wonderful museum. We also went to the fish market, and in order to go to the fish market, you had to be up at two forty in the morning in order to get into the fish market, and I think Sandy went there as well the year before. We went to the Yasakuni Shrine and War Museum, which was very interesting, because we learned about World War II from the Japanese perspective. And we were reading, you know, firsthand written documents from survivors from World War II, and we're also looking at the Japanese documents, and it was very enlightening to see how things are viewed from a very different perspective. So that was a very interesting museum. And we also were able to see Kabuki performances, and then also go off the Tokyo Tower, which looks an awful lot like the Eiffel Tower. So we had modern as well as ancient, as well as some cultural performances, as well as We visited Nara and Kyoto, and they are known for their Buddhist temples as well as their And finally, just wanna talk a little bit about the Japanese food. There was no way that you can, you could get away from it. We did have Western-type breakfast, but our lunch and dinners were not. Our lunch and dinners were very traditional, so you would have anything from a bento box to tempura to sushi. And yes, there were times when you were presented with a whole fish with a head on and with the tails, and, and we had a woman who was on the trip, who was from the West Coast, but her family was originally Vietnamese. And so she would show us where the really good meat was underneath the eyes to eat, because that was her favorite part to eat. We let her have it. Next, we traveled to China, and we traveled to Shanghai, Xi'an, and Beijing. In Shanghai, it was very interesting, because you went from the very modern to the very old. So we saw the Yu Gardens, which is on the right-hand side, which is a traditional garden that goes back to the time of the emperors, and then we also went up the purple, the Pearl TV Tower, which is in the purple on the left, and that's part of the Pudong, which is the new commercial center. So we were in both parts of the city. We also went to the French Concession House, which is where the Communist Party was founded. So we went to that museum as well. And all over the place, they had, they had signs that said, "Do not take pictures of anything in the museum," but, and they had guards there, but everybody was allowed to take pictures. So you would ask the guard, "Can I take a picture?" You'd show your camera, and they'd say, "Sure." So we're taking pictures of all these original artifacts that, from when the Communist Party was created. So it was very, very interesting. And from there, we traveled by plane to Xi'an, and Xi'an is where the Terracotta Warriors are. It was very interesting. It was basically three airplane hangars filled with Terracotta Warriors. They were very amazing, and you could see the different, the different expressions on their face. We also learned that I had previously thought, or previously been told, that all of the warriors were different, and they're not. They were much more like Mr. Potato Head, and that's how it was described to us, and as a Rhode Islander, I get that. So instead of, the people who assembled them were artists, they, they basically had nine noses to choose from and twelve sets of ears, so they could put one nose on one person, a different eyes on somebody else, and ears, and so, and they've discovered this recently through testing through DNA and, and through X-ray. And so they figured out what has, how they created them, so. And that's just been a recent discovery. Two other things that we saw while we were there. We also saw the Great Mosque of Xi'an as well as the Wild Goose Pagoda, and there was the story of Buddha in the Wild Goose Pagoda, and it was all done in jade. It was amazing. It was a wall probably as long as the table, and the whole mural was made out of different colors of jade, and it was just fabulous. And then from there, we took a train, one of the high-speed trains, to Beijing, and here, you're looking at the Temple of Heaven with its beautiful, really intricate designs. And so you have this old building, but yet they were having, there was a group of models, they were having a shoot for the models there at the models, they were having a shoot for the models there at the same time. So it was very interesting to have the old and the new together. We also saw, we went to Tiananmen Square, and there, you could see one of the typical pictures that you would think of China. You see the, there was a lot of military presence, but you also have the young kids and this real pride for China. No, no trip is to China, you know, can, can, would not be complete without going to the Great Wall. So we went to the Great Wall. We also went into the Olympic site, and we went to the Beijing Opera, and then we also went to the Drum Tower, which is where they used to tell the time. They would, you know, each hour, they would have one drumbeat, and at one, one hour, they would have thirteen drumbeats, so that you would know to reset your clocks and make sure that they were correct. And just looking at this, it's foggy. It's a little bit foggy because of, of the setup here. However, when I was in China, it looked that way, because there was so much smog that we never saw the sun. We used to, but every now and then, you would get a glimpse of the outside, the outlines of the sun, you would take pictures, just to prove that it was really there. So, in Chi, in Japan, it was very sunny, but in China, we never saw the sun. So my takeaways, you know, I, I think part of it, what Sandy said, is very true. We are a very global society, and we need to make our students be aware of that. You know, I think some of the things that I will certainly bring back to class are some of the small things, you know, some of the food that we talked about, some of the customs, the fact that, I said to Mr. Merkel the other day, I said, "You know, if we were like Japan, our hallways wouldn't be dirty, because they have two pair of shoes. They have inside shoes and outside shoes. And if they had those, then when they came back from gym, all of our hallways would be clean, rather than covered in the, the mud that's coming in from, from outside." So it's those little things that you begin to notice. The fact that we have four or five bicycles on our rack versus, I don't know, they probably had three hundred. So it's those things, and some of the different food and how they make them, and how they celebrate their customs. So these are things that I'm really excited to bring back to my students, and really happy that I had the opportunity to be a part of this. It was, it was a great process. Some people said, "Well, did you go with a friend?" And I said, "Well, no, you don't go with friends." Because, there were, there were twenty-five people chosen from the United States to go on this trip, and there were only three people from New England. Another person was from Massachusetts, the other person was from New Hampshire. And so the likelihood of having two people go from Rhode Island is pretty slim. So normally, you are going and meeting a whole group of different people. But, they too are in the same boat that you are. So as soon as you get on the plane, you get to know one another, and you bond very quickly. So, it was a wonderful experience, and I too hope to be continuing to travel to different places in Asia. I'm not sure I'm willing to go to Africa, but certainly in Asia, to learn about other places that I'll teach about. And I'd like to thank Mr. Merkel for supporting me, because he wrote me a great letter of recommendation to help me get into the trip, and he has certainly supported what I have done educationally. And he's always willing to try, let me try something new, which is really, really great. Including the drumming this winter. Thank you very much for your time, I really appreciate it.
Since we don't have anyone who's signed up for Citizens Comments, Dr. Humbert, can you provide us with the superintendent's report in Dr. O'Jee's absence?
Yes, thank you. I just want to call your attention to our district Professional Development Day, which was on November sixth. We had a very successful day. We had all of our staff participating in professional development. What I want to highlight to you is that we are focusing on our social and emotional learning, and so we offered some professional development in SCL. So we have a program that's being used now universally in our district called Open Circle at the elementary level from K to five. And so we had thirty-three teachers who began a four-day training. They did Thursday and Friday, they'll do another training in January, and another one in the spring. We also had thirty teaching assistants that completed the one-day training. And in February, on our next Professional Development Day, we will have forty-five teaching assistants that work at the elementary level, trained in this program. And then we also had an emphasis on our mental health. We had youth mental health first aid, and we had twenty-five staff members that attended that. Guidance people, so, the psychologists, the speech, OT, and social workers, and our special educators. We had a session on Lyme disease, and we had jump rope for heart, and we also had the heart monitor training at the high school for those heart monitors that we bought last year. So amongst all the other professional development that we did, and included many other topics, we did have this emphasis on health, both physical and mental. And then the other thing that I wanted to just speak to you quickly about is the POC testing update. I gave you, provided you with a handout, looks like this. And this is some dates. We had the, access to our POC results on Monday morning, November ninth, yesterday morning. The results are embargoed until November seventeenth. And so the next thing that's happening now is, we are meeting as a team with a RIDE facilitated session on Thursday, and we will be looking at, it's called a release meeting, we will be looking at the data with RIDE facilitation. And we have the hard copies of the high school reports that are going out on the sixteenth, they're being mailed to the schools, and the grades three to five will be mailed out at the end of November. But once again, all results are embargoed until the seventeenth. And so, once the, once everything is released, I will be presenting to you in more detail.
Thank you, Dr. Humbert. So I can disclose that there were no executive session votes on November tenth, two thousand and fifteen. Can I have a motion to seal the executive session minutes of November tenth, two thousand and fifteen?
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Are there any exemptions to the consent agenda? Can I have a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda?
So move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Mrs. King, do you have anything to report for the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen school budget?
I do. I, I'm looking for some guidance from the committee, and Mrs. Carroll can certainly weigh in on this. One of our missing members tonight had asked that this be brought forward. We have two schools, a career tech school and a charter school, that are looking for payment for students that never attended the school. So, one for the career tech school for the Met. They're looking for us to pay them for the first quarter for a student who was enrolled as of August fifteenth, and who enrolled with us on August twenty-eighth. So this student never attended the Met, and they're looking for the twenty-eight hu, two thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollar first-quarter payment. Another student, Kingston Hill Academy, they are looking for payment for the first quarter, it'll be the same amount of money, for a student who moved to South Kingston sometime around August twenty-eighth. So the reason why I'm bringing this to you is to either get your input to make those payments. I attached for you guidance from two thousand and eleven that's from RIDE. What I do know, that Mrs. Carroll can provide more information about, is that those two agencies can request through RIDE that our state aid be withheld, and there be a hearing to discuss the issue. But I would like to know if there is a vote for me to make the payment or not make the payment.
Mrs. Carroll, do you want to comment?
Yes. These are very extreme cases. Normally, if a child starts the first couple of days, you're, you're required to pay for the entire first quarter. In these two cases, the child never, ever stepped foot into the Met, and I believe even the KHA one, he never went. But, I think we should take the chance, and I think we should fight it. The worst that's going to happen is they're going to take our state aid and take this amount of money out of our state aid. That's the worst that's going to happen. I think we need to notify them that we're not going to pay, and that if they, and that we want a hearing, because this is ridiculous.
I want to make a motion that, to require the finance director to withhold the payment for these two students.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. So the next item on the agenda is approval of the Town Government Center Committee appointees. And the, the only question I have is, we have two members here that are recommended, Mr. John Biscardin and Diana Izzo, and I just want to confirm that they have agreed to participate in this before we make a motion to approve?
They have. I've spoken to both of them directly. Ms. Izzo actually, in the timeframe that I was asking her if she'd be interested, was actually talking to someone else, saying, "Can she join?" So, and Mr. Biscardin also, who's still on our facility's subcommittee. The one thing that I do want to point out to you all, though, is that, so this is a committee that's going to formulate the recommendation and the thinking of this Town Government Center. Any decision to fund or move administrative offices needs to come back to this committee for a vote. This committee is not, is, cannot vote and bind you on, on anything. So, this is just a committee to vet the process, to make recommendations on what space is needed, possibly what, where we could go to, but you guys, this has to come back to you guys before anything firm or commitment is made.
Thank you, Mrs. King. Can I have a motion to approve the Town Government Center Committee appointees?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mrs. Carroll, can you provide us a charter school legal update?
Yes. I believe Mr. Jones asked for this to be on the agenda. All I can tell you is, we're still monitoring the water tower at Kingston Hill, and as of today, they have not started the water tower. So, we're watching it in terms of future enrollment, but right now, that, so we're not, not, not involved.
I just want to thank Ms. Hammond and Mr. McKay for their donations for the reference stimulus in our correspondence.
Thank you. Acknowledged.
So make a motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.